Proposed ordinance number 2021-11, an ordinance establishing the Mishawaka redevelopment authority.
Thank you. May we have the committee report, please?
Yes, Mr. President. To the members of the common council of the city of Mishawaka, your committee on land use planning, to whom was referred the matter of proposed ordinance number 2021-11, report that they have examined said matter and that their opinion, it should be adopted. This is signed by the entire committee and I move for its acceptance.
Second. Thank you. A motion has been made and seconded to approve the committee report. Any questions or further discussion on the part of the council? If not, then all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We will then move into the second reading of public hearing on proposed ordinance number 2021-11. Anyone wishing to speak in favor, if you would, please come forward.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the council. Ken Prince, city planner. Tonight, I just want to take a step back before we proceed with the presentation of the resolution. As you recall from early last summer, Mayor Wood directed us as staff to prepare a three-tiered approach to the recovery from COVID. The first step of that process was the allocation, the immediate allocation of special funding that we received from state and federal government regarding our sub-receipients, basically funding programs such as Real Services, the Mishawaka Food Pantry, Boys and Girls Club, all to support our social safety net from the impacts of COVID. The next tier, or the next leg of the stool, was our small business loan program. So although we only had moderate success with the loan program, that was a $10,000 loan that could be obtained at zero interest and no payments for six months to allow small businesses who had an immediate impact to have a way to stay in business, essentially. Again, we had funded 50 potential loans and of that, six were ultimately approved and we think that by and large was because of the grants that were afforded from the federal government that were obviously, if you can get a grant rather than a loan, you take the grant instead of the loan. At that time, we identified the third leg as a potential bond issue for stimulus. We knew as part of the recovery that construction trades were going to slow and businesses were going to be adversely impacted. And when you look at the way local government can assist, providing construction jobs into the economy is one of those ways. And so essentially, at that point in time, we started developing the construction documents necessary. If you can imagine projects, you can't wish them into the ground, you have to prepare detailed plans and specifications. I will say that we did not make up new projects as part of the proposed stimulus. What we did, as we discussed at a previous meeting, was we took projects that were already on our capital improvements plan or basically attempting to move those forward. When we met or after following the direction of the redevelopment commission earlier this year, we engaged legal counsel to assist us with the process. So since that time, we afforded multiple pieces of information to you regarding the step-by-step process that's needed to undertake a $45 million stimulus bond. So $45 million essentially, we thought was a good bite of the apple. I don't know how else to describe that. But it puts a significant amount of work on the streets but yet still reserves bonding capacity within our tax increment financing district should other projects come along. And rather than belabor that point this evening, I just really want to reiterate that Catherine Finello, who's a partner with Creek Default, is attending virtually. She'll be presenting the specifics on the resolution. But I will say this evening, the only thing that you're acting on is creating the redevelopment authority. You are not actually approving the bond issue this evening. As was identified in Catherine's outline of the calendar, that would not occur until your May 3 meeting. So regardless of how you may or may not feel on the bond issue, we respectfully asking for your favorable consideration of the ordinance this evening because it allows us to continue to move forward. And obviously, we can continue as we have from the beginning indicated that we're willing to talk at any point in time regarding the bonds or any point in the process. So if you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them. I know Mayor Wood is attending. If you have any questions for him, otherwise, we would turn it over to Catherine for her presentation.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Prince?
Great.
Thank you, Catherine.
Thank you.
Anyone else who's physically present who wishes to speak in favor of the proposed ordinance, if you would, please come forward to the podium. And Mr. Mayor, if you want to defer until after Catherine talks, if that's your pleasure, we can make that happen. With that, then, anyone participating remotely who wishes to speak in favor of the proposed ordinance, if you would, please unmute your microphone. Ms. Finello.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right. Good evening, everyone. It's good to see all your faces in the Mishawaka City Building.
Thank you.
As Ken discussed, this ordinance before you is simply to establish a redevelopment authority under Indiana Code 36714.5. As explained previously in the material provided, a redevelopment authority is required here to use as a financing mechanism for the size of the projects that are being discussed. The statute itself lays out all the parameters for the redevelopment authority and all of the components in the ordinance that you have before you are in strict conformance with the statute. It provides the number of board members, who may appoint those board members, and exactly what the purpose and the role of the redevelopment authority is. So as Mr. Prince indicated earlier, this is simply to establish the authority to provide us with this financing mechanism. And there will be several approvals along the way as we get closer to the bond approvals. And I'd be happy to answer any questions about the authority establishment.
Thank you. Before I inquire whether any council members have any questions, in order to help me avoid trying to get in any trouble with the city clerk, could you state your name and address for the record?
Oh, yes, sorry. Catherine Finello, 1-8441, Summerwind Lane, South Bend, Indiana.
Thank you. I owe you one. With that, any questions from the council for Ms. Finello?
Ms. Finello, I do have a few. First of all, I appreciate all the work that you and your firm have done on this. It's an exciting opportunity for us and a creative way to fund the projects that we're looking to fund. But since it's new, I do have some questions that, and in many respects, you've already answered the questions with the summary document that you provided to us. And again, thank you for the work on that. But just a couple of follow-up questions. You know, and I'm going to try to be specific on your summary document. I'm looking at paragraph 2B, lease payments, and then sub-paragraph 3. And it talks about at the end of the lease, the leased asset will become the property of the redevelopment commission. So then there would be a formal transfer title back to the redevelopment commission at that time, correct?
Correct. And the redevelopment commission could then transfer it back to the city.
Okay.
The good thing about this structure is that it all stays in the family, so to speak.
All right. And then I'm going to jump down to paragraph C in that same section, which talks about, you know, the maintenance and repair of the leased asset during the term of the bond. And there is a reference to the relationship between the redevelopment authority, the redevelopment commission, and the city. And I want to make sure that I understand this correctly. As I read this, that the redevelopment commission, and it's phrased as the city/Mishawaka Redevelopment Commission for obvious reasons. But my question is, if title to this asset is going to be held initially by the redevelopment commission after the transfer takes place from the Board of Public Works, and then it's going to be held by the redevelopment authority during the pendency of the bonds, I can understand why, I guess, what would be the involvement of the city in making repairs to an asset that it no longer holds title to?
So the commission could enter into what we call an agency agreement of sort to allow the city to make those repairs because, again, there will be a lease. The redevelopment commission is leasing the asset from the authority. And so yet, the city will want to make repairs and improvements to the road. So it's simply a matter of effecting a paper transaction where we allow the commission and the city to enter into basically an agency agreement allowing the city to make those improvements, as long as those improvements continue to hold and increase the value of the asset to support the bond.
Let me follow up, then. And this wanders into the final paragraph in your document. So then, if the repairs, and, you know, it's probably more of a theoretical question than anything else, but if repairs are necessary during the pendency of the bond, would that, would the funding source for those repairs be TIF funds or the general funds of the city of Mishawaka?
It could be either, depending on what the project is.
Okay.
And how the city wants to fund it. And so.
Okay. Then I have a couple of questions related to the timetable that you put together for us. And again, thank you for your work on that. With regard to, and this wanders into other areas of the documents as well, but there's a reference to the organizational meeting of the RDA and in other portions of the documentation, it makes reference to the fact that the appointees to the RDA are mayoral appointees pursuant to the relevant statute.
Correct.
As a follow-up question, then, would there be anything, if he was so inclined, that would preclude the mayor from appointing a member of the council to the RDA if that was his pleasure?
Not that I'm aware of.
Then I'm jumping forward to the portion of the timeline, all the way to Monday, June 7 of 2021. And there's a reference there to that being the last day for 50 more taxpayers to object to the execution of the lease or file an action to contest the validity of the lease. First question is, what is the start date for that 50-day period? If June 7 is the last day, when does the period, the objection period, I guess I'll call it, begin?
That would be May 6 and 7, when we publish notice of an execution of lease.
And then, jumping back down to June 7, with regard to an action to contest, would that be subject to the jurisdiction of court here in St. Joseph County? Or would that be more akin to an administrative proceeding before a body of state government?
Could be both. Quite frankly, one that I'm aware of has never been filed.
Well, and I hope I didn't jinx us by asking that question. But thank you for that.
Well, seeing there hasn't been, I'm not aware of one.
Okay. And then just a couple more questions, and I appreciate your patience with me with regard to the statutory underpinnings of the action that's being proposed. You know, I'm looking at Indiana Code 36714.5. My first question is, and again, I'll confess, I wasn't aware that this was available to us under the law. So congratulations to you and the administration for your creativity in identifying this for us. One question is, as you may be aware, we have recently embarked upon a plan to repurchase the old Liberty Mutual building in downtown Mishawaka and now embarking upon a move of City Hall and some other governmental offices to that facility. Just out of curiosity, would this same type of funding mechanism have been available to us with regard to the City Hall project if we had chosen to go that route as opposed to using utility bonding?
That I can't really answer without further information.
Okay.
But this is available for public improvements projects, you know, that usually are more high-dollar and require lease, but there are other ways to finance those projects as well. So without all of the information, I wouldn't say for sure, but...
That's a fair answer. Thank you. And then, there is a reference in the ordinance in front of us to, as I read it, the potential of a special benefits tax being part of the mix here. Could you explain to us how that would work and what the likelihood is that a special benefits tax would come into the mix here?
So as I understand it, this is going to be covered by tax increment. In some projects, they are funded by tax increment, and to the extent that tax increment is unavailable, a special benefits tax, which is really kind of the special language for the redevelopment district, is basically a property tax that is levied in the redevelopment district, which the boundaries are the same as the city. So it's just a different way of calling it a property tax under the code.
Okay. And then, final question, at least from me. I read these documents as having, making no reference to any additional pledges of security on the part of the city, the redevelopment commission, or any other affiliated Mishawaka entity to secure the bonds. Is that correct?
That is correct. Any type of security really is not going to be in any document except for the bond documents that would be approved by the council, which that security right now is the tax increment.
All right. Fantastic. Again, I appreciate your patience with my questions and thank you for the information.
Wonderful.
Any other questions for Ms. Finello? And thank you, Catherine.
You're welcome.
Is there anyone else participating remotely who wishes to speak in favor of the proposed And Mr. Mayor, did you want to say a few words?
Thank you, Mr. President. Councilmembers, Dave Wood, Mayor, here to speak in favor and encourage your support of proposed ordinance number 2021-11. This is one of the formalities that we need to accomplish while working towards the ultimate goal of passing our bond, which has been explained on at least a couple of occasions. First of all, as we started and presented to the Mishawaka Redevelopment Commission and then had a special meeting for the council to discuss what our goals and intent are. As our city planners so ably communicated, we did come up with a plan. This was but one leg of that plan. More specifically, we think that the timing is right for a project, a program such as this. And why do we think so? Because we are seeing right now a great opportunity to bid out projects. We have bid out a couple here recently where we have saved, just in bids alone, coming back several hundred thousand dollars on each project. That tells us that companies are hungry to get our work and that they are sharpening their pencil to get it. So that's a good indicator of what we can expect with a bond such as this. Also, these are projects that we're going to build anyway. We may not get to them paying cash until, you know, six, eight, 10 years down the line. We're certainly going to build them cheaper now than we will in six, eight, 10 years. And we also want to take advantage of the favorable interest rates, God bless you, that we're going to be receiving in this current climate. So if we can, say, get interest rates of under 1% and save ourselves hundreds of thousands of dollars potentially on each project, those add up. And then if we can get projects done now rather than save ourselves, rather than pay more over the course of six, eight, 10 years, then we think that that is a very good, sound plan financially. I'm a guy who does not like debt, but if there were ever a case to do it, this might be it. Because, you know, we do know that there are companies out there, which translates into workers out there who are also our citizens, who are looking for the work for their long-term viability. And so I would encourage you to support this. Again, this is just one of the formalities. We have multiple boards. This would just be another one. We only pick good people to serve on our boards and people who have the best interests of the city of Mishawaka at heart. And so that would certainly be the case with this. And with that, I will ask if you have any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for Mayor Wood? Not a question, but again, thank you to you and Mr. Prince and everybody else involved for the creativity that you've shown to, you know, bring this to us.
Thank you.
And with that, we'll move into anyone physically present who wishes to speak in opposition to the proposed ordinance. If you would, please come forward to the podium. Seeing no one, is there anyone participating remotely who wishes to speak in opposition to the proposed ordinance? Thank you. Are there any council members who wish to speak? If not, then I call for the question.
Question.
Madam Clerk, would you please poll the council?
Yes.
Mr. Benicki?
Yes.
Mr. Hazen?
Yes.
Mr. Mammelanti?
Yes.
Mr. Emmons?
Yes.
Mr. Belovich?
Yes.
Mr. Compton?
Yes.
Mrs. Volker?
Yes.
Mr. Hicksonbaugh?
Yes.
Proposed ordinance passes 920.
Thank you. We'll now move into privilege of the floor. And at this point, we will invite members of the public to speak with respect to non-agenda items only under privilege of the floor. And we'll begin with anyone who is physically present here in the council chambers who wishes to speak under the, under privilege of the floor. If you would, please come forward. If you would, begin by stating your name and address for the record.
Gina Prusowski, at 519 West Edgar Avenue, Mishawaka. Gina Prusowski?
Yeah.
Oh, I can't go now?
Yep. And then the floor is yours, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. My name is Gina, and I moved from Michigan, bought a home here about four years ago. So I'm new to the area. And I was wondering if we could do a town hall or a council meeting with the mayor to, with the health department to go over some questions and concerns your constituents have for this Moderna and Pfizer biotechnology gene therapy shot that they're giving out? Because this is not a vaccine. This is new technology. This is an experiment. And I think there needs to be more questions that are answered by their health department and mayor that it's rolling out.
Well, I'd certainly be happy to engage in that conversation with his honor. You're, you know, he is here live and in person, so I think you're welcome to speak with him as well. We certainly can't commit to the health department participating in any such meeting, although they're certainly a valuable partner for us and the community in the effort to address the pandemic. My one bit of, additional bit of hesitation is that with regard to vaccination and the specifics of the vaccine, that's heavily regulated by the federal government. So while there could be some, undoubtedly, there'd be some good information that could be shared at the local level, there's a big piece of the puzzle that lies at the federal level as well as the state level. But certainly, we'll consider your request and consult with the mayor and the health department and any other relevant players to see if there is such an opportunity that we can put together.
Can I make a couple good statements?
Absolutely. The floor remains yours, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. I did a lot of research, about two months' worth of research to what this is and if it's right for me, if it's not right for me. And just some, some things that are concerning is Moderna's never produced a successful mRNA before ever. And they had one that they were trying in 2017, and they had to scrap that because it kept killing animals. So, and I don't know if you know, that Moderna created this COVID biotechnology gene therapy in 42 days. They could skip the main trials because it's under the Emergency Use, what is it, Authority Act. So it was only maybe three months. We don't know what the long-term effects are. We don't know what the mRNA, how fragile it is, because if it's mutated, it can cause cancer, it could cause neurological disorders, and you can't get that out of your system. It's not like a wild virus that was weakened or dead that your own immune system can get it out. This is created to be in your immune system. That is the difference. That makes a lot of people hesitant, and we need to start really having this dialogue. And the concern is, is that there is tons of HR bills coming out of our federal government and other state governments about vaccine, vaccinate, this is HR 2527, Vaccinate All Children Act in 2019. Then we have HR 666. This is COVID testing, reaching contact everyone with mobile units in support of quarantine FEMA centers. There's a lot that's coming down, and we are not being, I think, vigilant in really getting some, you know, logical questions, using our critical thinking on what is going on. And I think because this is all new, this is experimental, things been rushed, things are upside down. I think a lot of things are going a little too fast, and a lot of laws that are very uncomfortable to forcing getting things done. And like, Washington DC, they passed, the city district passed a law, Act 23532.
And ma'am, I'm going to interrupt you. You know, when we start to talk about other municipalities, Washington DC and the laws that they've enacted, I'm sure you can understand that's a little bit outside of the scope of a local municipal governmental entity in Mishawaka's address.
But I think it's relevant.
Well, and I certainly appreciate your passion for this issue and the research that you've done. My suggestion would be that it undoubtedly would be more valuable to us if you had documents that you wanted to submit to the clerk's office. The clerk is really good about making copies and distributing to us, and we'd be happy to review them. And then, if there's going to be some follow-up conversation, it would make more sense to me to defer on the information that you're sharing until the proper time.
Right. But this is relevant because of what the federal government states for all children and it says 11-year-olds can make their own decisions. And this was a city, so we're a city as well. And so that makes me concerned that other principalities could do the same thing. That's why it's relevant.
And again, I appreciate your passion, although...
It's concern.
There are, and concern, but there are, again, those various bodies of government that we have no control over, quite frankly, who are involved in this. And ultimately, it is a voluntary vaccination system that's in place right now. So while, you know, certainly, I think I could speak on behalf of my colleagues, we'll be happy to consider any information that you have. If there's a desire to work with other entities to put together some information sharing for the community, you know, we'll take a look at that. But, you know, at this point in time, I'm going to ask you to wrap up with any additional final points that you wish to make. And again, invite you to submit any written information to us that you'd like us to consider.
Okay. And yeah, because this is under the Emergency Act, so it's not mandatory. So we need to be proactive and find out when it is going to be mandatory, because it is. Are we going to legislate, like prophylactics or other alternatives other than doing a gene therapy that a lot are not going to take?
Okay.
At this time.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the presenter?
Mr. President, I just have a comment.
Mr. Hazen.
It might help if you, the health department is oversaw by the, or overseen by the St. Joe County.
Right.
And I think if you haven't been to one of their council meetings, that might be helpful there. And I think you more or less just want to get the information out, and we can try to do that. I can meet with you after the meeting if you want to stick around and give you a few names of people downstate and that, too, that might want to talk about. Like President Hicksonbaugh said, it's kind of, I understand what you're trying to do is say, we're not going to vote on it. I mean, and if it did, it would be publicized. You could come and talk at that meeting. But I think it's interesting, and I think I could give you some names of people that you could talk to.
Yes, because that is the concern, because these are getting passed in local cities, a lot of them. And so you guys have the power to do the same thing if you, if you wanted to do the same.
Oh, I might question that as a matter of law, but I can tell you definitively that we have not received any such proposal, no, nor would I believe that we would entertain it. But in any event, I think Mr. Hazen's suggestion is a good one. There is, at the local level, that entire additional layer of government that lies at the county level that really directly oversees the day-to-day work of the health department. We work with them, but they report to the county council and the, and the Board of Commissioners. So again, and... again, any written information you want to share with us, we'll be happy to consider. We'll be happy to help put you in touch with any of those entities who might be able to also chime in on the concerns that you have. But unless there are any other questions, we appreciate your, your time and the information that you've shared with us this evening. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else physically present who wishes to speak under privilege of the floor? Then is there anyone participating remotely who wishes to speak under privilege of the floor? And with that, we will move into unfinished business.
Yes, Mr. President, we have proposed ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash zero two, and ordinance amending chapter one thirty-seven of the municipal code of the city of Mishawaka, Indiana, as from time to time amended, commonly known as the zoning ordinance of nineteen sixty-six of the city of Mishawaka, Indiana. This is PUD amendment to allow fuel pumps and convenience store with parking reduction at five two zero Bittersweet, southeast corner of Bittersweet and Vestula.
Thank you. Ma'am, we have the committee report, please.
Yes, Mr. President, to the members of the common council of the city of Mishawaka, your committee on land use planning, to whom is referred the matter of proposed ordinance twenty twenty-one dash zero two, report that they have examined said matter, and in their opinion, should be presented to the council as a whole. This is signed by the entire committee, and I move for its acceptance.
Second. Thank you. A motion has been made and seconded to approve the committee report. Any additional questions or discussion on the part of the council? If not, then all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? With that, we will move into second reading of public hearing on proposed ordinance twenty twenty-one dash zero two. Anyone physically present who wishes to speak in favor, if you would, please come forward to the podium.
Thank you, Mr. President. My name is George Lepiniotis, of the, also of the law firm Craig Devault, Mishawaka office. My address is forty one oh one Edison Lakes Parkway, Suite one hundred. Good evening, and thank you for having me. I am here on behalf of the petitioner, one of the petitioners, Dave and Sons Properties LLC. Dave and Sons is a owner and operator of various convenience stores and gas stations throughout the state of Indiana. As part of their business, they identify opportunities to grow their business and develop new stations. One of their niche markets is taking now vacated and bankrupt family video stores and converting them to convenience stores, gas stations. They have found large success in this, in that the convenience stores are often located in high-traffic commercial zones, much like the one at the corner of Bittersweet and Vestula. I have presented to you earlier today a quick book of the project. The project has brought more concern than I originally thought when I took on the assignment on behalf of the client, quite frankly. And so I thought it would be beneficial if you had this in front of you, so that you could see a little bit more, not only about my client, but also about his proposal for that particular station. I have found that the more information that I can give you, the better off you might be in making your decision. As I mentioned, it is a vacant family video store. It is currently zoned, and that's an error, and I apologize, it's currently a PUD with an allowable zoning of C two commercial. It is not the C three downtown district, as we all know. They are requesting a change or an amendment to the PUD, and that is the Becaro, Bacato, I'm sorry, PUD, to allow for fueling stations that would be C ten. The only variance from the C ten request is a change in parking. Again, it says four less spaces there, but I don't believe that's correct. I believe it's, it's more than four spaces that is lower than the C ten requirement. However, it's a little bit difficult to calculate parking spaces because there is some shared-use spaces in that PUD. There is a, there's a common drive and such, and some, some parking on both sides of the drive. The staff report was favorable in this, as I mentioned, to the planning commission. As a matter of fact, there really were very few concerns on the staff comments of, of the staff report. I believe that one of the concerns was that some, a barrier be provided between the residential neighborhood to the east, and that is the Reflections apartment complex. The plan, the site plan you have on the very back of, of this, of this packet will show that that has been agreed to. It may even be a little bit higher, and it may even have some, some, a hedgerow along with some screening to help give a solid block between those two uses. We say this often, but the station would be one of the highest and best uses for the corner. It is an interesting corner in the sense that there are, there's a medical plaza to the northeast, or to the north, actually, on the northeast corner. There is a school and church, Catholic school and church, between a peace to, on the northwest corner. And then there's some residential, the twin branch residential neighborhood surrounds it, as well as the apartment complexes. We don't anticipate that this would be a destination gas station. There's nothing about it that would bring someone from far away. It would truly be designed to serve the neighborhood and the, and the needs of the residents in that neighborhood. I've put down here state-of-the-art environmental and fuel delivery systems, an experienced stable owner. They own approximately fifty BP and Shell stations throughout Indiana. Their operations also go into Illinois and Kentucky. If you turn the page into section B, it tells you a little bit more about Mr. Paul Singh. He is with us today on the phone, as is Jeff Ballard from Dancharner. But as I mentioned, this is not a new thing to them. Under subsection C of my proposal, you'll see this will be a nationally branded fueling station. This is not something, my client is, is very adamant that his stations are very well lit. They're nice places to be at. They're very recognizable. I also note on page three of my proposal, because this has become somewhat of an issue, and I underlined it, this is not a twenty-four-hour operation. My client would be willing to put that in writing and make it a part of the PUD amendment, so that the station could be limited in its hours, at least the convenience store part. Now, Mr. Hazen was part of our town hall meeting and others with experience in that industry, and a question came up on the fuel pumps. While the convenience store may close with the fuel pump state, the state of Indiana allows for that. Our environmental laws have, with, with the advances in technology, operators can keep an eye on their fueling pumps, and there are alarming systems built in now. So yes, the fueling pumps would stay on, but from what we understand, that has largely become universal and is almost an issue of safety and convenience, especially, for instance, my client's example was, an employee doesn't show up thirty minutes late for work on a particular morning, and a person is used to stopping at that gas station to get fuel and does so, and the pumps aren't working because the employee was late. This would alleviate some of that hassle, and that's what it was designed to do, both at the state level and at this particular station. I've put down here that the proposed hours would involve closing by midnight. I don't think it would be every night, and we are flexible and open. The bigger concern is that it is open early enough to be open and take advantage of the morning traffic. That is a important part of my client's business, is being able to serve those as they get up and go to work and get ready for their day. As I said, we've got a professionally engineered site plan, considerate of the traffic flow. Dancharner spent a significant amount of time and expense on the site plan and looking at a truck flow pattern. During our town hall meeting, which was prompted by Mr. Emmons during planning commission, we spoke with the residents, and that was one of their concerns, was the traffic. That really was the only issue that became something more than a question, was there were a couple of residents, one of whom was a truck driver, who had some concerns that the site was too small to allow for them. So toward the end, if you skip ahead to, to H, which is toward the end of the, of the, of the book, you will see a truck movement study prepared by Dancharner. The black lines, from how I understand it, and I am not the engineer, but the black lines do represent the tire marks. If you were to put ink on the tires and let the truck drive through there, that's where tire marks would fall. With the exception of one tree, which is an example of the landscaping that could be accommodated with different types of shrubs and trees, there really is no impact, including what I consider to be a very hard left turn heading westbound either onto or off of Vestula. It, the, the traffic flow shows that there is ample room. As a matter of fact, in some spaces, if you look at your scale of an inch being approximately twenty feet, there are some spaces where the, the flow is almost forty or fifty feet wide for a truck to make it into and out of the site. So this, this site plan, and I stress, was really created in response to some of the concerns we heard at the town hall meeting. And that really was the one issue that stuck with us, was the twenty-four-hour concern and the site being able to accommodate those trucks. So we wanted to give the council that assurance that we had looked at it scientifically and ensured that it could happen. Moving backwards, which I often don't like to do, but I do sometimes, section D shows photographs of my client's most recent station. This one opened approximately a month and a half ago in Brownsburg, Indiana. It is one of the BP concepts. You can see the interior of the store is well-lit, well-trafficked, well-scoped for, for various code and safety violation, or provisions. And if you look at the exterior, one of the things that I want to note on page ten of my pamphlet is the, how focused the light is off of the canopy. That is important in an area and a residential neighborhood where there are neighbors, and we do not want light from this fueling station to flood someone's front yard. If you'll notice, the light dies quickly, and that is largely because most of the light is pointing down from the canopy. It is designed that way to ensure a minimum amount of light spillage off of the site. I also, in section E, gave you just an example. I, I, my client has not yet created a drawing of the fuel systems, but this one I found online, and it is close. It is not perfect, but it is a close representation of what the fuel tanks and systems would look like underground, and just how much, how many safety precautions are in there, including strapping it to those, those dead man anchors that you can see there, to ensure that they don't twist and turn. That has been a problem in the past. This is a double-walled line tank. Part of it is fiberglass, although there is an option for all of it to be fiberglass. It is controlled through a computer terminal, for lack of a better term, that is in the station, constantly monitored, both locally and remotely. From what the environmental and fuel pump system consultants and contractors tell me, there really is no way nowadays that you can have a fuel spill and not know of it. And as I mentioned, my client has a significant amount of experience in stations and is a very professional operator. He was part of the town hall meeting, if you look at page fifteen. He was part of the town hall meeting on February tenth and open to answer questions. I believe he was very open to the community and, and made himself known. That, the notice was given of that town hall meeting to residents by council members, neighborhood watch groups, and some social media. It included the twin branch neighborhood watch. It included notice by the owners of Reflections and, to their residence, and, and that's the apartment complex that is part of that PUD. It was held via Zoom. It lasted for approximately an hour, with a maximum participants of approximately twenty-five out of the, and I'm sorry, I don't know exactly how to quantify how many people were invited, but hundreds of people were invited. And there were approximately twenty-five participants, including four council members, myself, Jeff from Dancharner, and my client. Generally, we received a positive response, except for the truck issue. Otherwise, members of the council, I have nothing further to tell you, except that I appreciate your time. I appreciate your consideration and hope you will vote for this change. I think it is the highest and best use, and I am open to any questions you might have.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Lepiniotis and Mr. Benicki?
Thank you, Mr. President. Sir, I got a couple of questions. One is lighting.
Yes.
I own a house right next to a station that was just rebuilt.
Okay.
They put in brand-new canopy lights. The lights are perfect. But now you've got entrance lights, you've got lights on the side of the building for security, things like that. It's like the sun is up twenty-four hours a day. So for you to say that that light won't reflect other ways, I don't believe it.
Okay. I can tell you that, you have the photograph in front of you, there is no plan to put light on the side of the building.
Okay, how about like the drive entrances?
There's only plans to put lights on the canopy pointing down, and
So that's a security issue, then?
Absolutely. There's, there is a plan to put lights on the canopy pointing down.
Yeah, but I'm saying that at the drive entrances, if you're going to have cars coming and going at night, that could be an issue.
I don't think that's, and I can research it for you, sir, but I don't think that's code that you need light at drive entrances for all commercial stations. As a matter of fact, light pollution is a big deal, like you mentioned. As we run into these more urban, planned urban developments, these, you know, these, these situations where commercial and residential sometimes coincide, light pollution's a big deal, and my client's very cognizant of it, will do everything he can to limit that, including the fence and the fact that on this particular site, I believe there's really only one house directly bordering it to the east, up to the west. On the east, you have that entire strip, of course, but there will be a fence with block.
Okay. And then I go back to your diagram of the, the truck traffic in and out.
Yes.
And, and I really have to question ingress and egress of this store in general, because onto Vestula, if you've got one car that wants to turn left, one wants to turn right, there's not enough room for three cars in that drive entrance, more or less a truck.
Well, you know what? I've got Jeff Ballard here on the phone. If you could, Jeff, if you could unmute?
Why don't we defer until we complete questions for you, and then we'll
Okay. Well, I would defer that question to Jeff.
Okay.
He's the engineer, and he ran that study. So I would be lying to you. If I, I barely understood it when I looked at it, but he explained it.
Okay. And then as far as traffic, not only on the site, because that is such a tight site. I, I actually owned the store for twenty-two and a half years, so I got a little experience. When we're talking about the traffic on both Bittersweet and Vestula, one of the attractions is the traffic flow. But part of it is that you've got all these school buses for both the high school and middle school that is just to the north of that. And so now you've got backed-up traffic at certain times of the day, morning and afternoon, when he wants his prime traffic, that, that it's going to be hard to get people in and out of this.
All I can tell you is this. It used to be a video store, right?
Yes.
For many years, and the council approved it. And it is currently zoned C two commercial. It is on an intersection, and any use will increase the traffic. I don't know that a gas station will increase it that much more than the family video when it was in its heyday, and the only way to watch a movie at home was to go rent it, right? I would routinely return my movies in the morning on my way to work, and that would create traffic. Any commercial use will create traffic. And I think that the site does plan for it. Remember, it's got, it's part of that PUD, so it also has that common road to the south. And so that will create a little bit of flow away from the intersection, and cars can access from that entry, that common entry off of Bittersweet.
Right. And, and to that point, so when they're leaving onto Bittersweet, there's going to be cars that'll want to turn left, or heads south.
Right.
And with two lanes of traffic heading northbound, at times, that could definitely be an issue.
It could. It absolutely could. And that, that's part of the balance, right? I mean, I, at some point, something hopefully will go in there. We don't want to make it forever just to avoid traffic.
Right.
Right? And I think that my client is saying that if it's done correctly, he's not planning on cutting any more curbs. He couldn't. And if he could, he'd have to go through many steps to get there. Not only this body, but he'd have to go through indig, because I think at least Bittersweet, I think, might have some, some ingress egress concerns there. There would be a lot to go through, and I just don't see that happening. I think that the site has the potential to handle the traffic, that this might generate, I don't disagree with you and your experience, that the site is not the biggest gas station site. Not going to lie to you, that's impossible to do. But I do think, if you look at, at Dancharner's plan, it is a professionally engineered plan. It isn't just something that my client slapped on a piece of paper. And he did hire a number of engineers to look at and to ensure that it could happen. And they're telling him, the engineers are telling him, it can work. So that's all I've got to say. Or I'm sorry, that's kind of my response to you on that?
Okay. Well, I think we're just trying to put a little lipstick on this, make it look pretty, make it fit, when, in, in all reality, you know, if, if you had to buy that corner and tear down, would, would that site be big enough for a station in this day and age?
Again, I've asked that question. What is the minimum? No one's told. There are stations on less than one eighth. And this is about an eighth.
Yeah, that's, that's very, very tight. And then, you know, once you put the pumps in And then, you know, once you put the pumps in, it just looks like the parking that's there now, if you've got cars parked east-west, you've got parking on each side, and then there's one lane each direction, by the time you put in pumps with cars, there's just not enough room. There's not enough room on the west side. If you have cars fueling up, there's not enough room on the west side for cars to pass along between the curb and them cars.
And I appreciate your concern. I do believe that the engineers have said there is. And I will defer those questions to Jeff Ballard, the engineer with Dan Charner, because he would be able to give you better answers on the science.
I look forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions for Mr. Lupinoidis, Mr. Emmons?
Thank you, Mr. President. Looking at your drawing here on the truck entrance and exit, you've got a horseshoe-type curve there. When you exit onto Vestula.
Yep.
What is that dimension between the parking and your trees, your landscaping, and what is that distance?
Well, the scale of the drawing is one inch to 20 feet. So it's at least 20 feet right there, I would guess. And again, Jeff Ballard will be able to answer a little bit more detail.
So you're saying you've got 20 feet between here and here?
I can't see that, sir.
Okay. Well, you've got, you say the tire marks and everything.
Yep.
From where you have the cars in it, you say from this point right here to this point here is 20 feet?
I would guess that's about an inch, yes.
Okay. And then, what are they saying here, when you make this curve, this horseshoe, what is the distance space here?
And again, I'm sorry, but on Vestula...
From the tire tracks to the tire tracks.
Maybe an inch and a half?
The reason I'm asking that is knowing and being in the transportation business for 20-some years, you get a 60-foot, 65-foot tractor-trailer, that's tough to make a horseshoe turn like that.
Jeff Ballard will be able to tell you what type of truck he considers.
Well, I mean, you take a fueling truck, a gas truck with a cab, most of them are cab over, and the length of it is usually 40-foot, so you take another 10 feet, you know, you've got 50 feet.
My client has mentioned that there are a couple of fuel delivery services that he utilizes, and that they do have specialty trucks for smaller sites. So my client does operate more than 50 sites in Indianapolis.
Well, I'm just asking here, you know, being in the trucking industry, to make a horseshoe turn like that is almost impossible.
It could be tough. Sure. I wouldn't say impossible.
Without jackknifing your trailer.
I think the drawing shows that it's possible, and the engineering shows it's possible. We have to trust in the numbers, right?
Well, I'm just saying, being experienced in the trucking business, you know, that's a tight turn, very tight turn.
Oh, I'm sure it is, yeah. There's no question that it's a tight turn, and I don't want to discredit that. But what I'm asking is, is it so tight that you need to say no? Is that fair? Is it fair that it's that tight? That it's that tight that we should scrap the project? And I think that the engineering study shows you that it's not. And I think when Jeff Ballard takes his turn here, Greg, he will explain to you that the science says it's not tight enough to be impossible. And it's not tight enough to scrap someone's project over that concern that it might be tight. I also will say this, truck drivers are professionals. And I lived in Chicago for a couple of years when I was in law school, and across from me was a truck depot, because I lived in a place where rent was cheap, near the truck depot. And I watched these truckers do amazing things. I'm not telling you they have to do amazing things. I'm just telling you that I would hope that if the engineers say it can be done, and the road shows that it can be done, and there is currently a restaurant on site, there was a family video on site, they got deliveries, the restaurant gets trucks that deliver food, probably large ones for a Little Caesar's in a franchise, they get in and out of there just fine. We've not had a plethora of calls on trucks clogging up Vestula delivering pizza dough. So that site is there. This isn't a new development, and we are very aware of its traffic pattern when the engineering was done.
You know, I'm not going to dispute you, but I doubt at the family video that they had 60-foot trailers in there.
Fair enough. Fair enough. I would agree with that. I would agree, it was probably the UPS truck.
And another question is, with being a small area, you know, we do have snow, and when they start piling that snow up, that's going to affect your turn and that of your tractors and trailers coming in there.
And I think my client is cognizant of that.
Well, I'm just asking that question.
Sure. I think my client is cognizant of that and will admit that he is going to have to be more vigilant about this site, right? If it were a larger site, it could hold more airs. But with this site, I think he's going to have to be vigilant about making sure that he moves the snow, takes it where it needs to go, dumps it. There are solutions for it, but I agree with your concern, and my client is very aware of it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions from the council? Mrs. DeMaide.
Thank you, Mr. President. Can you tell me how many employees you anticipate being hired at this facility, both full-time and part-time?
I can't tell you that number just yet, because the drawings haven't finished, but I would assume that it will be like anything, dependent on the hour shift. We know it'll only be two shifts, or maybe three, but I can't give you an exact number, nor has my client gotten to that point in the planning, so I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Lupinoidis, I have heard from our clerk that those who are participating remotely are having a little bit of difficulty hearing you when you turn to address people off to either side. And I know it's an awkward situation, but if you can try to stay in as close as...
I will. Thank you very much, sir.
Mr. Mamalanti?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Lupinoidis. First and foremost, thank you very much for your time jumping on that Zoom call.
Thank you.
I know it was beneficial for myself, other council members, and the residents of Twin Branch to hear that information, to speak here directly from the business owner, potential business owner. So again, I want to start off with saying thank you for that. Question that I have regarding the canopy lights, I know the convenience store will not be open 24 hours, but the fuel may be. Will the canopy lights remain on throughout the evening?
A few of them.
A few of them.
But lesser than the full amount of them. And there is a, there are some regulations in that on how many are left on and what the lumens have to be in order to allow, I believe. Again, Jeff Ballard can speak a little bit more to that, I believe, but many of them will be turned off.
Sure. Okay. And just to reiterate, not that that horse is still breathing or not, but to beat that thing again, I want to revisit the truck traffic. And I know that it can be done based on design, and I do trust the engineers. The one thing that I think that it may be missing is the human error, the human operator.
Sure.
I know this panel surprisingly has more experience in the trucking industry than I thought I just had, including myself, which manage a fleet of trucks as well, semis. And so I reached out to some convenience store owners, gas station owners, truck drivers, et cetera, and asked them to do me a favor and drive by this location. Every single truck driver said, man, that would be a tough one.
Okay.
And I get that. Like, as I mentioned, Mr. Ballard and his firm, I trust that on design that this looks like it would work. But again, and I know this situation will get better, but truck drivers are in high demand at this point.
Sure.
So they're passing the exams, but there, in some cases, they're getting put on the road with not many hours. And so that's my point being, human error, this does not take into account, in my opinion. So I just wanted to make that point as well, and to ask the questions about the canopy lights, and more importantly, thank you for your time on the Zoom call.
Thank you. Thank you for helping us with that Zoom call. You took care of the technology, it was a big part of that call, so thank you. If I may address your point.
Sure.
I do want to say, there aren't only two options for this site. It is not, don't approve a gas station, or I'm sorry, approve a gas station or shut it down and fence it off, right? It is still C2 commercial. Someone can still come in there and put something in by right without coming to this board, without doing everything my client has done, and just do it. And that can involve big semi trucks. There are many commercial businesses that get deliveries by their semi trucks. And I just want to say that I do, I respect what you did, and I understand it, and I do. I understand that the site isn't perfect, but the site was built that. That is what it was built, to handle C2. And I don't think it was built just to handle a video store. And I want to be concerned, I want to be cognizant of that. I also want to be cognizant of the fact that a gas station isn't exactly a truck depot. I mean, the fuel doesn't come, and maybe someone with more experience, Mr. Hazen, would be able to speak to it. I don't think the fuel comes daily, twice a day. Maybe during peak hours, I don't know that, but I don't think so. My local gas station, I don't see the trucks there every day. So we are talking about somewhat of a controllable situation. My client has said that he would request later-hour deliveries of his fuel, off-hour deliveries of his fuel. Again, that's always open to adjustment with real-world factors, but my client is adamant that if he requests a small truck, that a small truck show up. And if it doesn't show up, he'll switch vendors. My client is adamant that he will be cognizant of the truck traffic. And because it has been such an issue as we sit here today, he would be foolish not to be, right? Because if it doesn't work, then he's the one that looks as if he was not ready or prepared, so. You can trust in that, at least I hope, that it would work, or at least he would be cognizant of the issue.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just quick follow-up that I had forgotten. Does the, your client own or operate any convenience stores without gas stations, without gas station pumps?
I do not believe so.
Okay.
I do not believe so. I believe they're all fueling station convenience stores.
So if this were to fail, he would, he wouldn't go on with the convenience store only and just scrap the, in your opinion?
I've not asked him that. I've tried to keep it positive and say, you know, but I don't think so. But please don't hold me to that, I would need to discuss that.
No problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions from the council? Mr. Emmons?
Yeah, get to a follow-up. Where does the proprietor live? Does he live in the South Bend, Michawak area, or...
No, sir. I believe he lives in the Indianapolis area. It's 317.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Thank you to all of you.
Then at this time, since he has been sitting waiting patiently and was referred to in Mr. Lupinoidis's presentation, Mr. Ballard, if you would like to metaphorically step forward to the podium and state your name and address for the record?
Thank you very much. My name is Jeff Ballard. I'm with Dan Charner Associates. Our address is 1643 Commerce Drive in South Bend, Indiana. Just to back up, some information about the truck traffic routing. When we run this virtual software, we essentially run it at a mid-level, which means we're not trying to squeeze something in, and we're not trying to make it so generous that it's a simple task for a truck to get through here. Secondly, this truck that we ran through here is an average-sized tanker truck. It's not a 53-foot-long semi, a box semi. They are designed and made to maneuver more than a normal semi truck trailer setup. So when we did this scenario, we brought it in, coming north on Bittersweet, coming into that entrance, as you see it, heading north and then coming back around and lining up to the turn lane on Vestula, which would be putting the truck back on Bittersweet. We did check Vestula to see if it was a truck route. We didn't see any signs that it was, but also if it were to allow trucks, trucks could also come in from the east and enter the site easier and leave on Bittersweet easier. So there's a couple formats that could work here. But when we ran the software, we didn't push it. It's not shown to be, you know, a win-win situation. It's shown an average truck movement through here, not pushed hard and not done softly. So this proves that a tanker truck can come in here, miss all the curbs easily, make the turns easily, come back out onto Vestula very easily. And again, this isn't going to be happening every day. It's not going to be happening during high-traffic hours. It seems to me that the owner is going to make sure and take care that he arranges truck delivery, gas delivery, at a time when it makes sense. I can only speak to the safety of a truck coming through here, and I can only speak to the fact that it can be done easily with an average-sized tanker truck. That's our job. We've proven that. This is, you know, right in front of your face, you can see exactly how the truck can come in here, move easily through the site, and back out. To address the distance between the pumps and the curb on Bittersweet, 24 feet is as wide as a residential road in Michawaka, two 12-foot lanes. Certainly, there's enough room for a car to be parallel parked pumping gas, and a car to move through that situation on the west side, around and maneuver through the pumps. As a designer, and I've been a site designer for almost 30 years, I don't see any issues here with circulation. Drivers are drivers. They're going to make mistakes. Truckers are truckers. They sometimes are pressured, sometimes their schedules are tight, sometimes they're newbies, sometimes they're 30-year veterans or more. It's life. It's the way it works. Certainly not a reason to stop a project. To address the lighting, we haven't designed the lighting yet. I can't speak to the canopy lighting. The owner would be more apt to do that, but of course, we would design the lighting to have 100% cloth shields so that the light is not spread beyond the property line. That's the requirement of the city, which you're fully aware of, what the Sydney ordinance is for lighting. And Ken Prince and his department, they do a really good job of holding us to the criteria of site design, so we know exactly what we have to do there. Screening, of course, will be done as required. I'm sure the owner would be willing to go above and beyond if necessary to do screening the apartment complex. That being said, I could answer any questions if you have any, to help the situation.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Ballard? Mr. Paniki?
Thank you. Mr. Ballard, with the high school and middle school being just to the north of this intersection, right across the river, there's a lot of bus traffic. I mean, they could have six-deep on Bittersweet blocking them entrances. I mean, does that not concern you that people might try to cut through and get T-boned? And I mean, you just seem nonchalant about, well, you know, stuff's going to happen. Well, not to my family. You know, I just, we've got to do our due diligence to make sure nobody gets hurt, whether it's on the property or whether it's in the street.
I can't enter to the volume of traffic coming off of, you're talking about Penn High School north of the river?
Yes.
Yeah, there's several gas stations on Bittersweet and McKinley Highway that deal with a lot more traffic than this area is going to deal with coming off of Penn High School.
Thank you.
Mrs. Volker?
Thank you very much. Mr. Ballard, I just wanted to clarify something. Did I understand you correctly when you said that the distance between the canopy and the curb on the west side towards Vestula is 24 feet?
No, the distance between the pumps, the island of the pumps where the cars would be parking next to, and the curb is 24 feet. I'm not sure what the distance of the canopy itself is.
Okay. So, but what you're saying is that there's 24 feet for people to maneuver in when they're pulling in and out, or pulling out probably after having fueled their cars?
When they're pulling up, the space between the pumps and the curb is 24 feet.
Okay.
And that's essentially two roadway widths of a standard residential road in Michawaka.
Right.
Two lanes.
Right. I understand that. So, and is it, and is it about the same on the east side between the pumps and the parking spaces that are up against the building?
That's 36 feet.
Okay.
So we have a 24-foot width, which is a standard drive aisle in Michawaka. So we have a 24-foot width, which is a standard drive aisle in Michawaka, plus 12 feet for the alignment of, of people up against the pumps.
So just, I guess one of my concerns about, you know, pulling in and fueling up is people that might be pulling a boat or, you know, pulling a trailer. Do you feel as an engineer that there's enough room for somebody to maneuver a vehicle? Let's say it's a suburban pulling a boat. Is there enough room to maneuver something like that through that area?
Yeah, absolutely. If you're, if someone's coming in to fuel their boat and their vehicle at the same time, they have enough room to pull in there, do what they need to do and maneuver back out.
Okay. I have another question, but I forgot it. I'll remember it in a minute.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Volker. Mr. Evans?
Yeah. I'd like to put this question to one of my colleagues, Mr. Benicki.
Yeah.
You've owned a gas station for 20-some years. How many times did you get a small delivery truck to come in there and fuel your, your pumps?
Just the standard size. It's, it's always the same size.
And it's not, it's a regular, basically a 40-foot with a tractor on it?
Correct.
So you're talking 50, 55 feet?
Yeah, I mean, they're, they're definitely large.
I mean, to me, I can't see how a small truck can come in there and deliver $2,000 to $4,000 gallons of gas regular and then also the high-octane and then diesel fuel without making multiple trips back and forth. And that, it's not physical and it's not economically feasible. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Any other questions for Mr. Ballard and Mrs. Volker?
I remembered my question. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Evans, because you prompted me. My other question, Mr. Ballard, is where would the, the fuel truck go to fill the tanks? And would the fuel truck be blocking traffic during that time?
Uh, the fuel system itself, I don't think is designed yet. I'd have to divert that back to George and Paul. Of course, wherever those, wherever that fueling pad is, is obviously where the truck, the truck would stop.
Right. So the question is, where would that be? And would that be blocking traffic in and out of the site?
I, I, I've not seen the fuel plant, so I can't answer that question.
Right, I understand that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Volker. Mr. Copton, did you have some questions?
It was in response to Mr. Evans's question. Mr. Benicki, have you ever attempted to order a smaller truck from your fuel service? Have you ever called and say, hey, can you send me a smaller truck?
When, when I would order gas through the jobber, they send out whatever's going to carry the, the amount of fuel I needed.
Understood. So you could order a smaller truck if you so desired?
I can tell you that there's other fuel companies than the one I was with that their goal is to have stores close by so that they can deliver gas to multiple stores because they don't want to have to make them quick trips back and forth because time is money for them as well. So when I, when they would deliver me gas, it was between 8,000 and 9,000 gallons at a time. So the average truck was carrying between, you know, 16,000 and 18,000 gallons of gas.
But you could order a smaller truck if you so desired?
If.
Or you, you, you never attempted?
If the jobber has them. Most, most jobbers, I don't know that they have them smaller trucks.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, gentlemen. Any other questions for Mr. Ballard while we have him on the line? All right. Thank you, sir. If you would, please mute your microphone once again. Then we'll bounce back to anyone who's physically present here in the chambers who wishes to speak in favor of the proposed ordinance. If you would, please come forward. Then is there anyone else?
Hello?
I was just, if you'll bear with me for a minute, is there anyone else participating remotely who wishes to speak in favor of the proposed ordinance? If you would, please unmute your microphone and state your name and address for the record.
Salindo Singh, 6755 Robbiner Court, Indianapolis, Indiana. I am the owner that's trying to get this project done. And I would like to address some of the issues that you're talking about.
Please continue, sir. Although I would ask you, if you could, if you could boost your volume or speak a little bit louder. We're having some difficulty hearing you.
Can, can you guys hear me better now?
That is much better. Thank you.
Okay. First of all, a few of the things that I was listening to and kind of feel like I can probably answer them or relate to similar projects and stuff like that. The first, the first thing is the trucking. I think we're having, all having an issue with the trucking right now, getting in and out. As we speak, there is currently a Little Caesar franchise right now, right next to us, that get a delivery twice a week on a semi-truck, a full semi-truck. Without any problems, they're getting in and out. And that's what I think we are, me running gas station business, we probably get fueled twice a week. And most likely are deliveries in the night times because that's when the drivers like to come in because it's a less rush. They just want to take it easy and get in and get out. So if Little Caesar is able to get in and get out without any problems, I, I don't think we will have an issue that will create problem for everybody else. And the second thing, we do have some smaller sites, you know, and where if we need a 4,000 gallon and the trucking company have a 4,000-gallon tank wagons that they can run. And if like a customer like us, if we run X amount of sites with the company, let's say Clem Advantage or PMI out of Columbus, Indiana. Clem is one of the nation's biggest delivering company right now. They deliver fuel to everybody, like Circle K, Speedway and all them. If we request that, hey, we have this kind of situation and we need this kind of fuel, they, they will not say right away, yes. They will, they would like to see if they can get. And currently, we have smaller sites than this that they are easily getting and getting out with it. Because, you know, the ordinance changed over the years and things changes over the years, you know? But the drawings were there, the sites are still there, but the trucks, you know, they get in and get out, no problem. And the second issue was the lighting, lighting at the entrances. The lighting at the entrances is already currently there. We're not changing those. We're not doing nothing with them. The lighting that's right now is there, is already there. So if, I don't think it's bothering the neighbors right now and it will not bother in the future because it's there and it will not change. Canopy lights, we can change it to city requires, if city want us to put in the dim canopy lights, we can go dim, high, medium, any kind. There are a lot of kinds of LED lights that you can use these days that will not bother the customers or will not bother the neighboring communities. And if you go to Circle K, they have a light that where you can hardly just see it, the pumps and everything, and when you step outside, it's all dark. Speedway, us, BP, Shell. It's, we can, it's up to us what kind of lighter. And we can ask city, we can ask the neighbor, they can get together and decide. I will have the neighbors decide what kind of lighting they want. I can be that open to the project. I will let neighbors decide if, what kind of LED they want me to put on the canopy. I'm here to work with the city. I'm here to work with the neighboring community. I'm here to make friends, you know? I'm here to make good business. And like when, if you ask me a question, how, how far the, the canopy is going to be from tanks or anything like that, we don't have nothing drawn that up that far yet because we're trying to get, still trying to get this zoning changed to a purpose use. And that's, that's all I have for you guys. I think, I think we can make this site work. It's a pretty good site. And like my attorney said, we can give you something in writing, the hours of operation, that we'll close at a certain time, we will open at a certain time.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Singh. Any questions from the council for Mr. Singh? Mr. Mamalanti?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Singh. Also want to thank you as well for your participation in the Zoom meeting on the Neighborhood Watch meeting as well. So thank you. Quick question for you. How long does it take to unload a full tanker of fuel once it docks?
Thirty to 40, 30 to 45 minutes tops. Empty the fuel tank in, in our tanker, from tanker to our tank, 30 to 45 minutes tops.
Do you know how long the Little Caesar's trucks are there each delivery?
Oh, they're probably longer than that too because they have to park the truck and the driver have to get out and take the delivery down and then put it back on the truck. So they are longer there than our tanker is going to be longer. Because our tanker is hooking up the pipelines from their tanker to ours. Literally, they're just dumping the gas and just leaving. They literally have to park truck and then the driver have to come out to take the stuff off the truck, take it to the store and then run back.
Your estimation of 30 to 45 minutes to unload, is that a full tanker? Or is that your, if you were to get a short, short?
No, that's a full, I'm talking about full-blown tanker. So the tanker carries up to 8,000 to 8,500 gallons. That's state, that's state requirement. You cannot have fuel more than that, 9,000 gallon in your tank. You cannot have more than 9,000 gallons in your tank. Their tanks, that's 10,000 gallon tanks, but they are not allowed to use their tank to the 100% capacity.
Sure.
They can only use, I think, 80 or 85% capacity of the tank.
Goes by weight?
Yeah, by weight and plus when they brakes, push the brakes, you know, the gasoline tend to move around.
Sure. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Benicki? Yes, Mr. Singh, I got a couple of questions for you.
Yes, sir.
What size tanks do you propose putting in?
Oh, 10,000-gallon tank and 6,000-gallon small tanks, a diesel and 6,000-gallon premium tank.
Okay.
Like one, two tanks, one for 10,000 and one for 10,000 or 12,000 split in half.
Okay. So at least three tanks?
Two tanks, but split, one tank split in half.
I've never seen one split in half, but okay.
Yeah.
What, and of course, this is all speculation here. How many gallons of gas do you propose pumping per month?
Um, I would say anything around to 70,000 to 80,000 to 90,000, somewhere there, you know? Because there's already gas station in the community. So I'm not going to give you outrageous number, 100-plus thousand dollars because there's already gas station, there's already a fueling station they have down the road. And I don't think, we probably do more like 70,000 or 75,000 or 80,000, close to that, you know, in that neighborhood. And it also depend on the brand, you know? But we're going to provide them a better brand with a better credit card for customers. We're better, you know? Because right now, the grocery store is only a gas, they only have gas islands. They don't have full-blown convenience store and they are unbranded and we're going to be branded.
Okay. Well, I mean, based on if you were going to do, you know, 100,000 a month, so you're saying just under that. But that's still about three tankers a week at 8,000. And if you went to 4,000, that's about six, so that's about one a day.
No, but if we are, let's say right now, like, I think my attorney just showed you the store that we just opened, right now just reopened. So how, these days are different. We don't have to auto-fuel, they are automatically set. And the driver is usually able to view, okay, this store got this much gallons left, let's deliver them tonight, okay? Most of our, 85% of our deliveries in the nighttime. And that's when the driver like to do it because it's easy in and out for them too. And if, let's say, you say 4,000-gallon tanks, it's 4,000, if we need, if we need to put a 4,000-gallon tank, I don't think my company will say no to me. Because as much as business I provide to my jobber, he's more than happy to work me with anyways.
Okay, thank you.
But I don't, as, as far as we like it, I don't see there's a problem with a bigger tanker coming in because Little Caesar is still getting there and they're getting their things done. I don't see that my tanker will have a problem because it'd be the same, exact same distance, exact same length and everything like that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Other questions?
Thank you very much.
Other questions for Mr. Singh? Sir, I do have a follow-up question. And this goes back to some of the points that both you and Mr. Lupinoidis have raised this evening. And it goes to your commitment with regard to the hours of operation of the convenience store. What I
Yes, sir.
have understood is that your suggestion is that you would close by no later than midnight each evening. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And then there's a reference to reopening prior to the morning rush. And my hope would be that you could be a little bit more definitive in terms of time since when the morning rush hour begins is open to some interpretation. Do you have any thoughts of a specific time that you have in mind?
Yes, yes, sir. Around 4:30, 4, 4:30. See, what, how I decide that time? So in our gas stations, we run an hourly report every day in our stores. And we see if the store is not doing much business in nighttime. So there is no point for us being open at all. So we usually close the store. And we have seen in the 4:30 to 5 o'clock is the time when people start getting out of the houses because if somebody have to drive one hour to their job, that's the time people start getting out of the house and grab a coffee and get on to the way, start going towards the jobs and stuff like that, you know? So I think 4:30 was the time I was thinking about, if you guys can allow me to open my doors at 4:30, where I can have my morning rush people, because we have to get to the store, make coffees, get the breakfast ready, you know, all that stuff. Breakfast sandwiches and all that stuff, you know? It's a little process, it takes times to get things done.
All right, thank you. I appreciate that clarification. And with that
Thank you, Mr. Evans.
You are welcome. And if there are no other questions for Mr. Singh, then, Mr. Singh, thank you again for your time and your participation. And if you would, please mute your microphone once again.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who is participating remotely, I'm sorry, who wishes to speak in favor of the proposed ordinance? If you would, please unmute your microphone and state your name and address for the record.
Yeah, this is John Mosher, 15899 Peter Ridge Court, Ingranger. I'm the business manager at Queen of Peace Church and School. And while I, you know, you only have two options here, Mr. President. Thank you for letting me speak, either in favor or opposed. Queen of Peace, I spoke with our pastor just today. We're, we're, we're indifferent. You know, it's one of the principal neighbors on the corner. You know, we, we are not opposed to this gas station conversion. But, you know, we're not, we're also not overly supportive. We're, we're neutral. Our, our one request is that folks do continue to remember that we are also a school as well as a church. So if there are zoning or considerations of businesses or products that can be sold certain distances from a school, to just continue to remember that we do have a school tucked back in there. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Mosher? Sir, when you talk about those concerns that you would have, and I appreciate the binary nature of the choice that we provide and we, we hear that quite often, that people are not necessarily all, all in favor or all opposed. So you're in good company. But with regard to the concerns that you've expressed, are there any more specific details that you could provide to us about the concern that you have, particularly with regard to the schoolchildren who would be at times in close proximity to the convenience store?
No, we, we have no, I have no concerns with, you know, with the operation of the convenience store, given, you know, where the school is, where the church is. I don't want to be misinterpreted there. My only, my only reason of raising that is, and I'm not familiar with Indiana or, or Michawaka zoning law, that if there are rules that certain things must be so far from a school that those laws are followed. That, that was my only point. It's not a concern, it's just we ask that if those laws exist, and again, I'm not an expert, that they're followed.
Well, I appreciate that clarification and I am confident that if in fact this request is approved, that all arms of city government, including our planning department and code enforcement and all of the above, will make sure that all of our local ordinances as well as all provisions of state law would be followed. But I do appreciate that clarification. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And if there are no other questions for Mr. Mosher, then, sir, I'd ask you to once again mute your microphone, if you would, please. And then is there anyone else participating remotely who wishes to speak in favor of the proposed ordinance? Hearing none, then is there anyone physically present who wishes to speak in opposition to the proposed ordinance? If you would, please come forward to the podium and state your name and address for the record.
Oh, I can finally see again. Debbie Fox, 5117 Breeze Wood Drive, Michawaka. And I'm here on behalf of the neighbors in Twin Branch and River Point Estates. We've been chit-chatting on Facebook and they've asked me to bring their concerns. So I'm just going to read some of their responses to you. There are too many gas stations in one area. We have eight gas stations in a mile radius. The location is too small for fuel trucks to get in and out. And he said they And he said they would probably come down Bittersweet and leave out, leave out Vestula, and that makes them go down Cedar. Well, you had mentioned that maybe they would come in Vestula and leave out Bittersweet. So how are they going to get to Vestula? Are they going to go down Cedar Road, which is barely a two-lane road? I mean, it's awful to drive on, and we drive it all the time. And then they'd have to leave out Bittersweet, which then you're going across two lanes of traffic to get out onto Bittersweet. So that's also a concern. One of the neighbors was concerned about the waterways and the ponds, about maybe the fuel spillage or anything like that, hurting the thousands of geese that we have. That, you know, a lot of them said there are just too many stations in the area. One person said that they didn't have a strong opinion either way, but too many stations. They still don't see how the tankers are going to get in and out. And my son was a semi-truck driver, and so I asked him, you know, how can you maneuver through here? And he said it would be really, really tight, probably go up over the curbs once in a while, but, and then, so not only the tankers coming in, but the twenty-eight-foot trucks, box trucks, delivering the supplies to the gas station all the time, to the convenience store, so there's going to be that much, that much more truck traffic. Somebody wanted to know why the city council thought this was a good idea. So, you know, are you looking at the big picture at all of the neighbors? They'd love to see a restaurant or maybe a doctor's office go in there. And then I called Penn High School today to find out about buses, because you had talked about the buses just on Bittersweet, but you know, the buses actually pull in there three times a day in the morning and three times at between two and four o'clock to drop off kids. So, and you know that middle schoolers, high schoolers are going to be out there waiting for their bus, and instead of waiting for the bus, they're going to go into the convenience store, possibly spend their lunch money and then not have lunch to buy some things, miss their bus, or just be out there when buses are present. It's, that's, that's a concern for me. I'm always concerned about kids and their safety, and I think it's, it's a big safety issue for Penn pickup. Somebody said we don't need more gas stations, they'll never go into that gas station, we've got enough. In this area, you talked about it's going to be for the neighborhood, that the, that the gas station's going to be primarily for the neighbors. We have enough gas stations around our neighborhood that aren't directly in our neighborhood. You know, we've got Twin Branch, Riverpoint, we've got two sets of apartments, and so right in the middle now, you're going to plop a gas station? We already have gas stations on our perimeter that we use and are very sufficient, and we really don't need any more gas stations. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Mrs. Fox before she tries to escape without us asking her any questions?
Sorry.
This is Volker.
Thank you, Mr. President. Hi, I have two questions for you. Can you tell me where the school bus pickup is in relation to this corner?
They come in off of Bittersweet into those apartments, so there's that, which is, I think where he was saying the trucks would come in.
Honeysuckle.
So, it's at Reflections Apartments.
Okay.
They come in there, or, and she said, one of the buses comes in off of Vestula into the apartments and then comes out onto Bittersweet.
Okay. So you don't know exactly where that pickup is, though? But it's going to be right along in there?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm looking at a map right now. And then, thank you, and then my other question is, can you tell me, do you have any idea how many people participated in your survey when you're talking about, you know, this person was concerned about the box trucks and this person was concerned about the fuel trucks? Do you have an approximate number?
I probably had about twenty, twenty people chiming in on Facebook.
And if I can interrupt, give me a
Oh, sorry.
Deb, it's hard for people to hear you when you turn away from the microphone, so thank you.
That's why I tried to keep talking.
I know, it's tough, thank you.
About twenty.
Okay. I think that's all I have right now, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I just want to make a comment, that I did ask her to come by herself. So we didn't have a hundred people here, but I probably had about twenty-five to thirty people contact me. I had three email me and probably another two to three call and opposing it, but I didn't feel we wanted to stack a bunch of people up in here.
So I got
I knew she was coming, I knew Deb was coming, so I asked her to talk for the neighbors.
Thank you, Mr. Hazen, another question. I do have one or two, but before that, a couple of statements. First of all, I congratulate you on the good quality masks that you're wearing
They won today, the first game, they won.
On the first day of spring training. That may be the last time they win this year, but hope springs a turtle, first day of spring training. And then I'd be remiss if I didn't take this opportunity, since we go way back to the days when you were the school secretary at Twin Branch, and both of my boys attended Twin Branch, one of whom is on remotely, and I have to take an opportunity to embarrass him, and thank you once again for all those days where I was an neglectful parent and didn't arrive at time after school to pick up my kids, and you took good care of them, so thank you for that. Going back to some of the points that you raised on behalf of your neighbors, could you go back to the point, I didn't catch it in my notes, both your neighbors, and I guess I'd be interested from your personal opinion, if not a gas station, convenience store, what is it that you would like to see go in on this corner?
Well, a lot of them said a restaurant, that we need a restaurant in our area. There's just, really isn't anything. And some of them said a doctor's office. I know right down
Okay.
Bittersweet, there's a dental office going in. So, I mean, that's a great location for a doctor's office.
Okay. And then I appreciate the summary that you gave us of the opinions of all of your neighbors, and it sounds like there was at least one person who was somewhat ambivalent a little bit on the fence. Was there anybody who expressed support at all of the people that you polled?
No.
Okay, that's what I suspected from your, from your answer. Then not so much a question, but a couple clarification items, and I've heard, I think we've all heard this before, you know, why would the council think that this is a good idea? Actually, the council hasn't stated any opinion on this at all. We don't go out and recruit petitioners and developers to propose development at a particular site, and we really don't state an opinion until we take a vote this evening. So if you can help clarify that, the council hasn't stated an opinion in favor or against this at this point in time. That'll happen in a couple of minutes if we take a vote, but right now, there isn't any opinion of the council that has been stated.
And I think they probably, I don't know, well, I don't remember who passed that, but yeah.
It's not the first time we've heard it, but if you could just help clarify that, that'd be appreciated.
I can get back to him.
The other point of clarification, or I guess my own personal opinion, is that it's understandable why people will express an opinion frequently with regard to rezonings, that we have too many gas stations, or if it's a car wash, too many car washes, or if it's a restaurant with a drive-through, we have too many drive-throughs. And that's understandable that people express that opinion on behalf of their neighborhood, right or wrong, that's not a factor that the law empowers us to look at. You know, we live in a free market economy as we teach kids in school, and the market determines whether businesses are going to be successful, rather than government dictating that we have X number of gas stations. Eight may or may not be the right number, but we certainly haven't announced to anybody who was the ninth in line that they're not eligible to put a gas station up in Mishawaka. So, again, just a little bit of clarification, it's understandable why people express that concern, but it's a little bit beyond our scope to be able to say, this is, we don't have any facts to base it on, that the perfect number is eight as opposed to nine or seven, and it would be arbitrary.
It's not in the middle of our neighborhoods.
Right, right.
Well, and the other thing he said, you know, that they're going to, or, the owner said that they were going to open up at four-thirty in the morning, that's in the middle of the night. So their lights are going to go on at four-thirty in the morning because they're open? So now you're talking about a lot of light at four, you know, in the middle of the night, not, and, and for one, you know, if they shut down their lights when they close midnight, then you stop and get gas, that's not very safe either, because now you're in a dimly, dimly lit area getting gas, so.
All right. Thank you for your representation of your neighborhood, Mr. Compton.
Yes, Ms. Fox, thank you for coming out and expressing, and appreciate you not, you speaking for the entire neighbors, and I thank Mr. Hazen for that recommendation, because we would be here late if you weren't.
Yeah.
Did any of the neighbors say anything about, what if that property sits empty for five years? So they don't care, and it's, it becomes blighted, and they would rather see that than a business?
Well, I would, I would think, what is it, Little Caesar's that's there? Don't they have to keep that property up while
Probably their portion, yeah.
So, yeah. They just seem to think that there was something better that could go in there.
Would a Burger King with a drive-up be better? My guess is, my concern is, is, my concern is, is, I understand what you're saying. I do. I've looked at this corner, the, there's not a lot of, there's not a lot of single-family homes nearby, there's some apartments. I think that this corner, first of all, is very attractive to certain businesses. I think it's probably, I'm not a real estate person at that level, but I think that's probably a pretty expensive corner to be on. A doctor could find a whole lot better place that's a lot cheap, I won't say better, but cheaper. They don't need that traffic. A business like what is being proposed, or a fast food store that all needs traffic, that's why they want to be there. I, I think that it's, the people who look at, look at those kinds of intersections are certain groups of businesses. They want and need that traffic. The ones that the neighbors, or if I was a neighbor, might want there, don't want to be there. Because they, they don't want to pay for the real estate of that traffic, because there's a cost in that. I, I understand, I do. We hear this regularly, not in my neighborhood, not next to me. Put it some, there's got to be another place.
There is a place on 31, there's a family video, personally on 31 North.
And maybe they're moving there.
Yeah.
Maybe they are. But I, I just, I, you know, I, I don't know, I, the, the trucks, I don't, I, I don't know, I just, I don't, I, I think it's, I think it's the best use for that property, frankly.
See, I don't think it's big enough for a gas station or for a Burger King drive-through. I mean, I think it'd have to be like a sit-down restaurant, you go in and sit, or something like that, not a drive-through, not, you know, or a doctor's office or, or something, you know, a insurance agent, somebody that
Again, all places that, do they want to use their dollars for that busy intersection and pay for that busy intersection that they don't really need?
See, it's a busy intersection that doesn't need to be busier and congested with trucks and
That's, that's going, that's not going to change. That's, in my opinion, that'll aggressively get, thank you again.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Compton. Other questions for Mrs. Fox? Thank you, Deb.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else physically present who wishes to speak in opposition to the proposed ordinance? If you would, please come forward. Seeing no one, is there anyone participating remotely who wishes to speak in opposition to the proposed ordinance? If you would, please unmute your microphone and state your name and address for the record.
Rich and Carol Mullins. Forty, fifteen Pleasant Point, Mishawaka.
The floor is yours, Mr. and Mrs. Mullins.
Okay, I'll go first. You know, we don't have much of a say-so if the gasoline pumps go in there or not, I understand that, okay? I would hope that there's a clause, at least in a contract with the city, that when they go belly up, because there's too many gas stations there, when they go belly up eventually, that they're going to be responsible for taking those tanks out and putting it back to where it was today. And I think, I think a doughnut shop would be great in there. We would draw a policeman there, right? Right, Tony? Right, Tony?
Be careful, Mr. Mullins.
Okay, a couple, mine are just comments, you know, we've seen all the comments that Deb collected from neighbors, and I know that, I understand that just because we have eight gas stations, you can't say that's too many, you can't have another one, but I point to the corner of Bittersweet and McKinley, where there are three of them, and one of the three is continually being shut down because they can't get enough business. It's the one, it's currently, I believe, a marathon. Is it? Anyways, and, you know, with this COVID, in the last year, we have lost, a lot of businesses have had to shut up and go belly up in this neighborhood. And so for the remaining gas stations, convenience stores, I feel like as a resident of this neighborhood for many decades, I really need to support them. And it's not that I'm opposed to new businesses coming in, I think maybe it's just not the right time for convenience store slash gas station. Another comment has to do with that Little Caesar's delivery truck. I have watched them, they come in usually off of Bittersweet at the Reflections entrance. They go to, there are two entrances to the side of the Little Caesar's store. They pull in there, they are on the side of the store, unloading, they are not blocking any traffic, and they then proceed right out the way that they came in. They're not in the front of the store at all, they're on the side. So very easy in and out for them. I guess that's it.
All right, thank you both. And before I turn the floor over to other council members for questions, since we have you here, thank you for the work that you have done for many, many years with Mr. Mammalenti and Mr. Hazen and their predecessors in being the driving force behind the Twin Branch Neighborhood Watch, that is one of the most, if not the most, successful neighborhood watch organizations that we have. So thank you for your work there and your participation this evening. And with that, are there any questions for Mr. and Mrs. Mullins? All right, thank you, folks.
Lastly, I'd just like to say thanks to Deb Fox for being there, that's, that's great. Thanks, Deb.
Mr. President, I'm sorry.
Mr. Mammalenti.
Sorry, thank you, Mr. President, my small fingers you missed, so I wanted to ask the Mullins, did you purposely choose that office room so Mr. Hicksonbaugh could stare at those "Go Bucks" signs?
We all have one choice, we all have one room now. Go Bucks.
But the, the main question that I wanted to ask for, for Mrs. Mullins regarding the Little Caesar pizza trucks, were those full semis, to your knowledge?
Um, no, they're, they're not the great big long ones, they're the, like, maybe like, is that what they're called? Box trucks?
Like little box trucks?
They're like three-quarter length, they're not the full-length semis. So again, they very easily pull in and they're parked along the side of the store, so they don't go in and out across the front, like past family video or anything. We went over there and looked, and I mean, coming in the Reflections entrance there, there is more room than I thought, but again, somebody brought up the issue of like snowstorm, where are they going to put the snow?
Disaster.
And then try and get in and out. So I, I hadn't thought about the snow issue, but that is a valid point.
And regarding the time of deliveries, did you by chance take notice of how long those box trucks remained to unload?
No.
Okay.
No, I don't sit there and watch them unload.
I'll debate you on that one later.
Thank you, Mr. Mammalenti. Anything else for Mr. and Mrs. Mullins? Then I will ignore the opportunity to criticize Ohio State in favor of IU, and thank you again for your participation this evening, folks.
Thank you.
Please mute your microphone once again, thank you. Is there anyone else participating remotely who wishes to speak in opposition to the proposed ordinance? All right, hearing no one, then we will move into questions and comments from the council. Are there council members who wish to speak? Mr. Benicki.
Thank you, Mr. President. Looking at this piece of property, it is a tough piece of property, just because it's a little bit smaller than, than what a perfect newer gas station would be. I understand they're trying to repurpose it the best they can. As far as lot size, I mean, that's up to the people there. I mean, we're, they're trying to put ten pounds of potatoes in a five-pound bag, it's going to be tough. That's up to them, if they want to mash them, do whatever they want, that's fine. That's up to them. If they want to mash them, do whatever they want, that's fine. Sometimes you just have to trust your gut, use a little common sense, and say, you know, for safety with these cars going in and out so close to the corner, you got, you know, close to the school. It just, it just doesn't feel right. And, and for that reason, and the safety of, of traffic and, and possible foot traffic in the future, I just can't support this today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Benicki. Other questions or comments from the council?
I do have a question for Mr. Prince real briefly. And I apologize to drag you up in the wee hours of the evening, but...
Mr. President, now that you've brought me up here, I have to thank Mrs. Fox too for our few years at Twin Branch.
Thank you.
And I also have to say I'm in favor of a doughnut shop, too.
Duly noted, although that really wasn't my question, but thank you for sharing.
I'm a little punchy. I've been here a few...
I understand. I understand. Mr. Benicki just referenced the, the size of the parcel that's the subject of this proceeding. And, you know, your staff report notes that it's just under one acre, you know, .95 acres. What I'm trying to do is correlate that to other similar uses throughout the city. I guess first and foremost, in your opinion, are there gas convenience stores that are currently located on parcels that are roughly equivalent size to the parcel? That's the subject of this proceeding.
Actually, much less. You go to the corner of Mishwaka Avenue and Main Street, the 7-Eleven there is a perfect example of a gas station where the tanker comes in and it's jammed right into the parking area that they come in. The Speedway is larger than the 7-Eleven, but still smaller than the parcel in question here. The Sitco, I believe it's still a Sitco, that is on Lincoln Way between Twin Branch and Bittersweet. I believe that's also a similar narrow site that has issues in terms of, that are more severe than this one regarding loading and unloading. The other thing I want to point out is anybody that's looked at this, the family video, and didn't look at the site plan as proposed, they are looking at widening the pavement that exists there. They are not looking at using the existing pavement. So, there will be more room that exists today to get tankers in and out. To answer your question, I think.
Thank you. Actually, I had, since I drive by it every day, the 7-Eleven at Main and Mishwaka Avenue, I was trying to correlate the size. And it sounds like that's an even smaller parcel than, than the one at issue. One of the other points that was made this evening is that if this gas station convenience store use isn't approved, I believe it to be accurate, and I'd ask you to confirm this, that there is any use that is approved in our C2 shopping center uses that without further action of the council would be eligible to be located at that site. Is that correct?
Correct.
And, you know, I'm not going to ask you the exact number, but, you know, I printed off a copy of the ordinance and that, it, it appears that there are about 55 potential uses that are appropriate within the C2 district. Does that sound about right to you, 55?
I think it's actually larger than that, but they've probably broken down into different, and they, our zoning ordinance is a pyramid. So, essentially, it refers to other zoning districts as part of that. The other thing I would point out is some are not eligible because they have different parking requirements. So, a typical restaurant would have trouble going in next to the Little Caesar's because the parking would be completely deficient for it. Another carryout business, likely a carryout restaurant would be able to use the site. Might need a variance to go in there, but at 10 parking spaces per thousand, I'm not sure. Again, as noted by the petitioner, they are asking for a few less spaces. But when you look at the convenience store parking and how it's used when you're parking next to the pumps, we didn't think that was an issue, a staff. The other thing I want to say regarding the uses, all kidding aside regarding the doughnut shop, is that a corner like this with the high volume, and it was referenced by the council, and I think that's very accurate, is that people will look at this location. A doctor's office might go in here, but it's probably not likely. And what I am concerned about regarding the neighborhood, and we have no say in it because they're permitted by right, but stores like a vape shop could go in, a Lobob's, a liquor store, all are permitted uses that can walk into this building without any approval from the council. And it's a permitted use in the zoning district. So, just keep that in mind relative to the permitted uses, which I think is where you're going with the...
You read my mind, Mr. Prince, as usual. Thank you. Since we have him up here, any other questions for Mr. Prince? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And then I want to move to Mr. Lupinoidis. Although we don't have a right or rebuttal, there were some concerns that were expressed particularly by Mrs. Fox on behalf of the neighbors. And if you're interested, I would invite you to the podium to try to address those as you see fit.
You know, I too thank Mrs. Fox for being here and for organizing that, that effort. Thank you very much. I can tell you that my client is eager to have a business that's part of the community. There, there was something mentioned about, you know, this is there to service the neighbors, but how can that be when we don't want a gas station? I don't know if you guys are anything like me, but I'm like water. When I'm up early in the morning coming to work, I follow the path of least resistance. Right? I, I want to get to my office. I want to stop at the gas station that's closest to my drive. I want to avoid traffic. I want to do everything perfectly so that I'm not, I'm not inconvenienced. My client has a vested interest, will have a large vested interest, as you said, in making this a nice station. In making it a place that is easy to get in and out of. My client has a commercial vested interest in not having a tanker truck out in front of the store at 5:00 in the afternoon, or at 7:00 in the morning. Or even when the school buses show up to the Reflections apartment complex. And I think that we, as a capitalistic society, we, we rely on that, right? We rely on our businesses' profit motivation, as well as their good corporate citizenship. And my client has done nothing but what you've asked of them. They've invited members of the community to speak with them. We've made our lines open at the end of the town hall meeting. I let everyone know who I was and where I could be reached. I haven't heard even Mrs. Fox's concerns. I didn't think were concerns that were an odor or other things that could be very perclusive to creating a bad environment on that corner. I think that corner is best suited for this, and I think my client has a vested interest to do it, right? You know, we can sit here and debate the truck traffic. And you got, the reality is that you guys know more about it than I do. So, I don't want to do that. I don't want to debate with you on that because I'll lose. I'm looking specifically at you, Mr. Emmons, in your years of experience. I do think it's possible. Little Caesar's gets in and out of there. Other trucks will get in and out of there. And as we mentioned, if a liquor store were to come in here by right, you heard from John Moser, from Queen of Peace, in Indiana, it isn't even a requirement. There is no setback for liquor sales from a school, although it is a consideration of licensing. I believe it's 200 feet. Queen of Peace's wall is 238 feet. I checked this afternoon. So, it, it could be anything. And with what we've presented, I think that my guy's going to be a great addition to the community. And I think he will take these things into account as he's done with everything that he's been asked. You know, it came up, no one asked us to do a truck study. And it wasn't, it wasn't inexpensive. Engineers are not as much lawyers, but they're expensive. And he did that of his own accord. So, I, I do, I really do, especially when it comes to Mrs. Fox, want to say, and the, and the rest of the neighbors. We don't want to start this relationship, I'm sure my client doesn't want to start this relationship acrimoniously. He simply identified a piece of property that he thought would make a good business. Seems very American dream kind of to me. It's a good site. I can invest my money and make some money and service a community. I don't think he's asking for something extraordinary or something that would hurt the community. In an ideal world, nothing goes on that corner and traffic is lowered and everybody's got it. What they think is great, but then maybe it's not ideal because there's not a place to service, a place to get those services that we all require in our day-to-day work. So, I, I think that would be my only response, and I do appreciate everyone's comments. And I know my client does as well. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Lupinoidis, since we have him here? Mr. Compton?
Yes, sir. I got one important question.
Yes.
Will your store sell donuts?
I believe the donuts are on tap. I, my client is listening, and he's heard a lot of comments about donuts. So, I think we're going to get donuts.
I think that's important. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Walker?
I have a question for Mr. Prince, and I'm sorry that I have to ask you to come back up again.
I kid, but I am happy to be here.
So, I think it was Mr. Mullins made a comment about the tanks that the, Mr. Singh would be putting into the ground if this were to move forward. If, in the future, that business was no longer there, would he be responsible for removing the tanks?
So, the city has been put in a position, when we have acquired historically old gas stations, to clean up the property. In my tenure here at the city, which is now 20 years, that we've never experienced that with a newer station. I know there are provisions of law and contributions that are made regarding the cleanup from the state. I think everybody contributes to a fund. If you contribute to that fund, then that cleanup is handled by that fund. But that would be a better question for the operator. I, I don't think, I don't believe that burden would fall to the city with a newer station.
Thank you. Is there somebody else who could answer that question for me?
That would be...
Mr. Lupinoidis appears to be eager to answer that question. So, if there are no other questions for Mr. Prince, then we can invite Mr. Lupinoidis to the podium once again. Thank you, Mr. Prince.
I grabbed my book just in case. There is a drawing in your book of the tanks. Let's start with the obvious. What's in the tanks is valuable, right? So, the fuel would always be removed from the site if the station were ever to go bankrupt or cease to exist to be a station. Someone would be owed money for that fuel. Someone would have a right to that fuel. The fuel is very valuable. So, someone would come in and pump the fuel out instantaneously under that scenario. As you'll notice on my drawing, and, and again, it's not perfect. There, there have been numerous questions about the fuel delivery system and what it will look like. I do just want for a moment to, to point you to that, both the drawing and then, because that gives you a better example. These are double-lined tanks. The interior lining is either fiberglass or steel. And then the exterior lining, double wall, the exterior wall that comes into contact with the elements is fiberglass so that it cannot corrode.
Right.
And so, modern tanks are designed to hold fuel a lot better than old tanks. So, they are also monitored, as you can see up here, it's called number five, it's that ATG. That ATG is monitored not only by the owner, but by the state of Indiana.
Right.
And IDAM routinely. And so, if the station were to close, there's a very high like, it's highly unlikely that a fuel spill would have gone unnoticed by the time the station closed. A fuel spill nowadays is not what it was 20 or 30 years ago, where no one was even looking for fuel spills. They're constantly being monitored. So, if the station were to be closed, the tanks in the ground would be largely innocuous. There wouldn't be anything in there. They would just be tanks covered in concrete. So, there was really no reason to pull them out. Someone could come in and operate the site with the tanks there. The reason we were removing tanks years ago was because they were leaking, and they were leaching, and there were other issues with the soil largely around the tanks. So, the tanks were coming out because there was problems with that ground contamination around. So, I, I think in that regard, if the ta, if the station were ever not to be used as a station, and I would defer to, you know, kind of the future and changing, evolving fuel standards and IDAM standards, but the tanks would be secured and would not be an obstacle to future development.
Okay, I understand. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Compton.
Mr. Lupinoidis, and, and question about the tanks and fuel islands and such. Will they be owned by Mr. Singh? Or are they, as I understood it, it's kind of a separate entity? Like, like you showed signs of, BP signs, where they, BP would own the tanks and the fuel serving system, and not necessarily owned by Mr. Singh. Help me out. At least in this situation, help me out.
And Mr. Singh, I, I may still be online, so that means this may be a better question posed to him. But my understanding of it from my conversations with Mr. Singh is that he, his development company, the owner of the station, owns the fueling system.
Okay.
Pays for the fueling system. BP and Shell are the brand name that they are associated with, that helps them formulate fuels, helps them formulate their station. But that the, the actual fueling systems are paid for and owned by the operator.
Thank you.
Other questions for Mr. Lupinoidis? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments from the council then at this point? Mr. Compton?
This comment, you know, I do think that this is the best use for this property. I understand that there are people that are in the proximity that don't want to see another gas station in their neighborhood. But the people right across the street, the church, they're neutral on it. They're not, they didn't speak in favor, Mr. President, but they didn't speak in opposition. All they asked for is we watch out for what they do there and that they go by the law as they should, and I agree with that. I think there's other, as you hedged on and Mr. Prince talked about, there's a, a lot of businesses that could go in there that would be really objectionable to the neighborhood, in my, my opinion, would be more objectionable to me. I'm going to support this. I think that there's, there's a school and a, a church right across the street that doesn't seem to have a lot of concern about traffic, about trucks, about, about what's on that corner. I think it makes sense for that location, just looking at it, to me. Again, I understand why the neighbors are concerned. I do, I am. But I think it's, I think it's what's best for that corner.
Thank you, Mr. Compton. Other questions or comments?
Let me just add that I, I appreciate your sentiments, Mr. Compton, and agree with them. I also always appreciate the, the passion and the voice that's, and the concerns that are voiced by neighbors in close proximity to any of these projects. And certainly, they have made some valid points this evening. On the other side, I'm concerned about some of the potential downsides to this building not being used as is proposed. First and foremost, as was mentioned earlier, the potential for it to sit vacant for a lengthy period of time. Going back to the conversation that I had with Mr. Prince, I'm also concerned about the specter of some of those uses that could be enacted at this site without any further action of this council, being much worse, particularly in close proximity, to not just Queen of Peace, but Penn High School and Schmucker Middle School. Tobacco store, liquor store, the, the uses that Mr. Prince highlighted. So, I am, you know, literally torn on, you know, the merits of this proposal. One of the advantages of, you know, sitting in the chair in the middle is that I get to sit back and see how the rest of you are going to vote and have a little bit more time to process it. And sometimes that's very helpful. But one final comment I want to make, and I appreciate Mrs. Fox being here and, you know, thank you for being willing to carry back certain messages to your, your neighbors and especially our appreciation for their passion and their advocacy, as well as Mr. and Mrs. Mullins and the other people who have participated. One component of the community dialogue that has bothered me is that, as I understand it, there has been some refrain within the neighborhood that, well, it's just a done deal, and they're going to do what they want. And it kind of goes back to, you know, what, why, what's the council thinking about putting it there? And we touched on that. But that concept of it being a done deal, I find to be concerning because I would imagine that anybody who sat through what's going on, by my calculation, a two-hour public hearing on this matter, and some really thoughtful and well-articulated questions and comments on the part of my colleagues, I would defy them to say that this was a done deal and that this is, however it turns out, that it has been steamrolled down anybody's throat. So, I, I take some offense at that. So, I take some offense at that, and hopefully you and others who have participated can help set the record straight that however this turns out, there was a thoughtful analysis on the part of nine people who sit up here who worry about what's in the best interest of the community. My final comment's gonna be, the other thing that I don't think that we have talked about is, we focused on this neighborhood, and the voices and the concerns in the immediate proximity should resonate the loudest. But we're making a decision based upon what's in the best interest of the community. And going back to Mr. Prince's point, how is it fair for there to be a gas station on a much smaller parcel in my neighborhood, but suddenly it's, you know, a monumental problem in other neighborhoods? So, again, I'm torn by the equities and the merits of this. I appreciate the points that everybody has made, and again, I am gonna take advantage of being the last person to vote this evening and have some more time to process it. So, with that, if there are no other questions or comments from the council, I will call for the question.
Question.
Madam Clerk, would you please poll the council?
Mrs. DeMaye?
Yes.
Mr. Benicki?
No.
Mr. Hazen?
No.
Mr. Mammalanti?
No.
Mr. Emmons?
No.
Mr. Belovich?
No.
Mr. Compton?
Yes.
Mrs. Volker?
Yes.
Mr. Hicksonbaugh? The proposed ordinance fails 6-2-3.
With that, we will move into new businesses. Is there any new business to come before the council? And everybody in attendance is thankful if there is not. All right. With that, if there is no other business to come before the council, a motion to adjourn is in order. We are adjourned, folks.